It's five o'clock.
Hold on, do you want to start?
You ready? Good afternoon, I'd like to call the regular board meeting for June 21st at 5:00 PM in order. In front of you, you do have an agenda. There is a recommended change to this agenda to move the agenda approval item to the second item underneath call to order. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? So we need to approve the agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda? So moved by Ms. Adams, second by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor? Alright. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and student disciplinary records? So moved by Ms. Morrissey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cleveland. All in favor? We're going to executive session. It is six o'clock, we have to come out of the executive session. Is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Morrissey. All in favor? Alright. Is there a motion to approve personnel A. 1 through 142, B. 1 through 54, and C. 1 through 28?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Light. All in favor? Is there a motion to uphold the decision for tribunal number 22-218? So moved by Ms. Adams, second by?
Second.
Mr. Cleveland, all in favor? Alright, perfect. If we would, please stand for the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the recognitions, and there are no recognitions this evening, so we would like to move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone had the ability to, and time to review the consent agenda items? Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Ms. Morrissey, second by? Ms. Light, all in favor? Consent time, perfect. The next item on the agenda is presentation and discussion items. The first item is the financial report with Steve Asa.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Get my presentation started. Any moment now. Now, thinking. On the screen are the May 2022 financial statements. The goals have changed. The next slide, this slide is the monthly statement of cash receipts and dispersments. What this reflects is a report on our pool cash, which most of this is, reflects the general fund, but it does contain several title grants and other special revenue funds. But this is just a roll forward from the prior month, $148,881,331. That was our beginning balance. These are the various items of cash receipts during the month of May. Property taxes, those continue to decline throughout the year after October, November. Title ad valorem tax, that stays strong, that's staying strong from month to month. That's a function of car sales. Intangible taxes, $721,559.60. As interest rates go up, you would expect these to decline somewhat, and they have. Real estate transfer taxes, those are staying pretty even. The same with the Department of Education grants, this is our QBE money. And other government grants, these are various grants that we have, special revenue funds, Title I, Title II, IDEA grants. Down below are various other cash receipts, there's nothing unusual, because this is very consistent with prior months. So the total cash receipts, $33,105,269. Subtract from that the expenses for the month, the dispersments, $51,028,617. That's roughly a net decrease of $18 million, that's pretty standard for month to month, to see as a client of 18 million per month. The ending balance, the May 31st, $130,957,983.37. The next slide is a year-to-date budget report. This is the detail of revenues, year-to-date through May for 11 months. Ad valorem taxes, $230,235,490. As you can see, we've exceeded our budget. Intangible taxes, as I mentioned before, those are, as interest rates go up, those are probably going to decline. Real estate transfer taxes, those are a little bit higher than what we budgeted. TAVT, that continues to exceed our budgeted amount. And then down below are the revenues. These are reimbursements from schools for various pay supplements, E-rate money, that's a variety of items, down to this 3.4 million item. QBE earnings, those stay pretty steady throughout the year, we do get a bump up with our midterm adjustment. And these are some other grants. General fund grants. And then just, we're constantly selling items of furniture and fixtures that are no longer needed. So, the year-to-date revenue, $502,702,336. The next slide is the year-to-date budget report. Revenues are summarized, and the expenditures are broken out by function area. This column is the year-to-date actual. That's 91.57%. 91.67 is 11 divided by 12, so it's tracking very closely to the budget, our FY '22 budget. The next slide is cash that's available for servicing debt. These different columns represent different holdings of cash and cash equivalents. The column on the left is the debt services checking account, started out with $51,89,455. Collected property tax, intangible tax, real estate transfer tax, and then the ending balance went up $202,051,292. The next column is the SPOS 5. Last month was the final month for collecting SPOS tax that's pertinent to the SPOS 5, it's closed out now. So it has earned interest, which is about 0.68% is the rate on these LGIP accounts where the SPOS 5 is housed. And there are some projects, capital projects, that are also being budgeted out of the SPOS 5 fund. So then balance, $56,224,827.64. Treasury's money market account, this one is not currently being used, there's $10,464 in it, but that balance stays the same from month to month. We may need this, so we keep it open. SPOS 6, this is the first month that we've had SPOS revenues coming in for the new SPOS that was passed, just a little bit of interest because the money wasn't put in there till late. But the collections were $4.8 million for the month of May. And then total cash that's available for servicing debt, $112,355,475. Special revenue funds, this will be Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA, the various CARES Act money. This is the current budget for all the potpourri of funds, federal funds. So $17 million, this is the month, to date actual expended, $908,924. These are the encumbrances, that's what's in the pipeline, and this is the remaining budget, $8,070,169. Many of these grants are, they extend beyond June 30th, so if we haven't spent it all by June, there's still time, they extend out to September, and some of them beyond that. The next slide is a roll forward of the cash balance available to capital projects and the school food services programs. Capital projects started out with $34,353,83. There were transfers from LGIP of two, just over 2 million, and there were expenditures on capital projects of $2.25 million, leaving an ending balance close to where we started, And then school food services, started out with $13,412,000. Add to that $2.89 million of grants received, from most of that USDA money. And this $2.1 million are the expenditures pertinent to school food services, leaving us an ending balance of $14,181. The next slide is a summary of all the investments that are held by the school system. There's no change in the general fund treasury account, again, we keep that in case we need it going forward. At $83,618,000 in our general fund LGIP, the ending balance is $67,664,430. Right here in the middle should be a reduction of $16 million, some of these rows got hidden, but we'll update the slide for the website presentation. But there is a $16 million transfer during the month of May. Again, about this time, right ahead of the payroll, we transferred money from LGIP to make the payroll. Fund 306, that's the 1820 bond, this is kind of nearing the end of its, it's almost fully spent. $2.99 million paid out, $1.467 million in capital expenditures and $1,347 of interest, gives us an ending balance of $1.5 million. SPOS 4 is still hanging on, started out with $3.3 million, had capital projects expenditures of $101,000, leaving an ending balance of $3.2 million. Let me back up and look at the Alliance Academy Fund. Fund 317, again, some of the roads were hidden. This fund, all the remaining balance in this LGIP was transferred over to the checking account, so this particular fund is, no longer has any holdings in LGIP. And again, as I mentioned, I'll update the slide for the website presentation.
So, real quick, does that mean that Fund 317 Alliance Academy bonds is done, if that's paid off?
It is not done because it still has money in the capital projects checking account. It's close to it, though, it's very close to being spent out. Fund 354 is SPOS 5, as I mentioned, there's no more, there's no more SPOS tax going into it. It started out with about $57 million. Add to that interest in the month of May, $33,000, leaves us $56 million, I'm not sure what happened. I'm sorry, that's why I done that up. Again, I apologize for that, some of these roads being hidden on this worksheet, but there were expenditures of about $400,000 in capital projects out of SPOS 5.
So you can just reprint this, when you go to put this on the web, when you do the normal reports?
Exactly, yeah, we'll get it.
Put it in a different format that you normally do?
But I thought I better mention it. And then in SPOS 5, we have an account that holds treasuries, as I mentioned before, it's just waiting to be used, should we need it. Fund 352 is the SPOS 6 fund, and that's where the SPOS receipts for the month of May are deposited now, $4.827 million plus a nominal amount of interest. The next slide is, reflects the activity in SPOS 5, it's closed, so there was no activity in the month of May. This slide reflects the monthly amount of collections of SPOS 6, it's the first month. Last year, the collections of SPOS 5 were $4.5 million, so there was a 7.2% increase over last year. The next slide reflects the cash holdings at the various schools. This balance, $4.476, it's up from last year. I think last year's balance was still feeling the effects of the shutdown. Middle schools, it's the same with middle schools and high schools, the balances this year are, in the aggregate, up from where they were last year. Having all the kids back makes a difference. And this is just a pie chart representation of the cash balances held at the schools. I believe that's it.
Are there any questions, comments?
I have one, real quick, about timeline. I know that at the end of May, our expenditures were right at 91.5%. We still have the month of June, which will be processed in July, right? And so July, August will know the actual funds that will roll over to the fund balance for the next year.
Yes, we'll have a pretty good idea of it at that point.
July.
But it takes up until September before the books are actually closed, because there are a lot of adjustments receivable, still have to be booked, payables have to be reconciled. But yeah, we'll have a pretty good idea about where the fund balance will be at that point.
In July?
Yeah.
Thank you. The next item on our list is policy IKBB, which is our divisive concepts complaint resolution process with Lee and Rice.
Good evening. It's my electric personality, just. Let it sit for a minute. I am presenting to you all tonight the draft policy for IKBB divisive concepts, the complaint resolution process. House Bill 1084 was signed and approved by Governor Kemp, it's also known as the Protect Students First Act. It goes into effect July 1st, and part of that law indicates that each Board of Education, local Board of Education must adopt a policy defining the complaint resolution process by August 1st. And so I'm presenting a draft policy to you this evening. This draft policy was based on a model policy that was presented by the State Board of Education and another model policy presented by the Georgia School Board Association. So our policy outlines the definitions of divisive concepts, what those concepts mean, what they entail, this was taken directly from the law. And then the second section will look at the requirements of this law. So our school system prohibits, and currently does prohibit, employees from discriminating against students and other employees based on race. And it outlines everything that the policy will and will not do, and then the steps, if people have a complaint about what's going on in the classrooms, this outlines the steps they would follow. And as with any draft policy, we will post this on our website for the next month for public comment, and then we'll come back to you all at the next board meeting on July 19th to ask for it to be adopted. What questions do you have?
Just a quick comment, as is true with any policies that align with state law, this is reviewed at several different levels, as Ms. Rice said, including GSBA and the legal counsel for GSBA and our own legal counsel to make sure it meets the intent of the law, which this policy clearly does. So, again, it'll sit on the calendar for 30 days, so public has a chance to respond to it, and we'd ask for your vote for it in July, which we're required to do before the new school year starts.
I just, just to confirm, is that, you know, you actually use some of the verbiage from the House bill in the policy?
Yes, sir, just about everything in here is verbiage straight from House Bill 1084.
Thank you for answering questions on it, it's almost literal from the bill, so it's pretty straightforward.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
That's the end of our presentation and discussion items, are there any action items? No action items? Alright, we are going to move right into public participation. But before we go into public participation, I need to read our guidelines for public participation, so bear with me just for a second. Before we begin, I just want to highlight six sections of our public participation policy. Meetings of the Board of Education are held to conduct the affairs and business of the school system. Although these meetings are not meetings of the public, the public is invited to attend all meetings and citizens are invited to address the Board at all regular meetings. All remarks shall be made to the Board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Board members. Personnel issues involving individual employees, issues involving individual students, and pending litigation are not subject for public participation. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civil. Any profane, rude, defamatory remarks or personal attacks will not be allowed. The Chairman of the Board is responsible for enforcing this policy, and speakers who are found in violation will have their allotted speaking time immediately concluded. By reading and acknowledging acceptance prior to speaking during public participation, speakers attest that they understand and will abide by this policy. Failure to abide by this policy may result in forfeit of your right to participate in future Board meetings. We have implemented a new process, if you look up here at the podium, there are three lights, they're going to be in this little black box, no more holding the cards, they left with, Ms. Abbott, she took them with her. And so we have the lights, and so when the yellow light comes on, it will be 30 seconds left in your three-minute time. When the yellow light starts to blink, you will have 10 seconds left, and then when the buzzer hits red, we ask you to please stop for your public comment. So with that said, you know, we want to talk about respect, we have followed the last couple of months about being respectful, and so, you know, we ask the speakers, follow the public policy, and that our audience members may not clap or make noise or speak from your seats. So with that, we would ask Mr. Jerry Kerschel to come up and speak.
We'll get to test that out, okay. Last month, we heard a tragic story of bullying, concern that progressive policies were being rejected by the public, demands that teachers be given unconditional respect, and an argument that sexually explicit books were required to teach critical thinking to students. Today, let's talk about critical thinking, about critical thinking. For some people, critical thinking is simply, let me criticize the things I disagree with. If I don't like religion, I'll criticize religion, if I don't like white people, I'll criticize white people, if I don't like individual freedom, I'll criticize individual freedom. Some teachers may think they're teaching critical thinking when all they're doing is pushing one dogmatic view, insisting that boys can be hormonally and surgically transformed into girls, and because of these mentally ill children, all of our children must be exposed to sexually explicit materials on the topic, isn't critical thinking at all, it's pushing ideology. Critical thinking requires challenging your own dearly held assumptions. It's the Christian who tries to understand the atheist, it's the feminist who tries to understand the struggles of men, it's the diversity, inclusion, and equity staffer who tries to understand the colorblind philosophy of MLK, it's the country music fan who tries to understand gangster rap. Of course, power enters into the equation too. Critical thinking can be most important when exercised against ingrained and powerful cultural forces. But we cannot fool ourselves into believing that we are the underdogs in order to justify our bias. Today, the woke leftists have control over incredibly powerful institutions in media, education, government, and private enterprise. They have strict, if contradictory, articles of faith that are not allowed to be questioned. We're not allowed to talk about non-affirming treatments for gender dysphoria, or anti-white racism, or the four slave states that fought for the Union and didn't free their slaves until after the Civil War was over, or the dangerous side effects from experimental pharmaceuticals, or how Fauci funded gain-of-function research in Wuhan, or anti-male sexism in schools, family courts, and corporations, or about protecting women's sports from mentally ill men. We are admonished to believe all women, but we can't define what a woman is. You can have a book filled with inappropriate sexual content that explores the specific truth of anti-gay discrimination. You can also have a book without inappropriate sexual content that explores the universal truth that nobody should be discriminated against. A good teacher should be able to pass on critical thinking skills and universal truths without sexually explicit material. One of my daughter's teachers spent several weeks in English class covering Will Smith slapping Chris Rock over a joke. This could have been an excellent opportunity to teach critical thinking, but sadly, not only was it clear what point of view the teacher had herself, but she promoted her point of view as the correct one. The entire experience would have been so much more compelling and useful to the students if they couldn't tell what her perspective was, or even if they could tell if she had argued strongly against her own biases. I'd like to ask the Board to support teaching critical thinking in our classrooms by instructing our teachers how to effectively argue against their own biases. If they are pro-abortion, have them steal man the pro-life position. If they believe in BLM, have them argue that all lives matter. At the end of the day, if our children can tell what their opinions are, they're doing it wrong. Thank you very much for your time, and again, I'd love to have one for anyone who disagrees.
Thank you. Alright. Our next speaker is Jerry Marinich.
Jerry Marinich, I'm here in behalf of the Forsyth County Republican Party as the Chairman. We have adopted as Executive Board a resolution for the Board to entertain. Whereas our Forsyth County schools are outstanding and a source of pride for our community, and whereas the elected Board of Education members have a fiduciary and constitutional duty to balance the needs of our school system and our taxpayers. Whereas the 2022 property tax digest has increased roughly 18% from the prior year, and whereas the fiscal year 2023 state revenues for Forsyth County schools will increase 29 million or 12%, and whereas with no tax rate reduction, this means the fiscal year 23 maintenance and operations revenues would increase 84 million or 16%. And whereas the Forsyth County Board of Education has only proposed a one mil reduction in the millage rate and none in the maintenance and operations rate. Whereas such proposal would only return 16 million to 54 million property tax increase caused by digest growth to the taxpayers. Whereas the cumulative school millage rate in Forsyth County has gone from 16.2 in 2007 to 19.7 in 2021, and there has been no cut in the millage rate since 2007. Whereas citizens of Forsyth County were dealing with generational inflation and now an enormous increase in the property taxes. And whereas elected Republican officials, the Executive Board of Forsyth County Republican Party are aware of the values of fiscal restraint, the tax burdens of tax increases. Whereas failure to roll back the millage fully to the full rollback rate is in fact a cumulative tax increase to the citizens of Forsyth County. Whereas failure to roll back the millage fully to the full rollback rate is in fact accretive tax increase to the citizens of Forsyth County. Whereas the executive board of Forsyth County Republican Party recognizes that our teachers and school staff are the backbone of our community, and we wholeheartedly support the proposed pay increases and adjustments in the current proposed budget, which represents a doubling of Governor Kemp's teacher pay increases. And whereas an increases in home prices, rent rates, taxes, further complicated by high demand for housing in the county, has made the prospect of writing or owning, owning a home in Forsyth County out of reach for many of our residents, including teachers, police officers, firefighters, young families, and other residents of Forsyth County. And whereas a floating homestead exemption can mitigate the risk of large tax increases and will not endanger school system's funding, since millage rates can be increased if needed, fostering a climate of fiscal responsibility, transparency, and making housing and residence in Forsyth County more accessible to teachers and others. Whereas the executive board of Forsyth County Republican Party urges the Forsyth County Board of Education to roll back the maintenance operation rate, one mil, in addition to the one mil rollback in the bond rate. Whereas this rollback can be made while still funding the proposed teacher pay increases, balancing the needs of the school system and reducing the massive tax increase imposed by Forsyth County taxpayers. Therefore, be resolved that the executive board of Forsyth County Republican Party urge the Forsyth County Board of Education to pass a resolution in support of a floating homestead exemption like that in place for the Forsyth County government.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have copies for you all, if you wish.
Yeah, if you just want to give them. Suzy, she'll hand them out. Thank you. And then our next speaker is Shivvi Mehta.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Shivvi Mehta, and I'm a rising sophomore in high school, my pronouns are she/her. I first spoke at a board of education meeting in June of last year, which means that it has been a year since I have spoken at these meetings requesting DEI measures be implemented. Since then, I have also spoken against bands. Over these last few months, I have felt nothing but ignored by you, members of the board. A few of you have expressed appreciation for students speaking at public participation, however, we have never received more than a thank you for our words. We haven't seen the policy changes that we have been requesting for months on end now. It appears you'd rather listen to a small, loud minority of parents who aren't in your schools five days a week, six hours a day, for a hundred and eighty days of the year. You are addressing the mere requests of parents rather than the dire needs of students and teachers. Students and teachers, myself included, have asked for diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, and have given you examples of situations in which those policies would have helped students. We aren't asking for teaching materials that would shame white students for being white. We're just asking for policies that would make LGBTQIA+ students, students of color, and other minority students feel welcome in Forsyth County schools, because every student deserves to feel like they belong at school. Please listen to us and take us seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes our public participation for today. I want to thank everybody for your comments and, and the respect. That is all for today's regular board meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? So moved by Ms. Light. Second by Ms. Adams, all in favor?